At West Tennessee Bank, we do more than make lawns. We build communities. We work hard to create unique, individual connections with every person we serve. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
All right, we're going to proceed with the meeting. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to say to approve the agenda. We will have discussion. All people say aye.
Aye. All right, that is approved. Then the first thing on our agenda is going to be the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to say to approve consent agenda. We need that discussion. All people say aye. Aye. And the next thing on our agenda is going to be celebrations. But Jerry, I'm going to ask you to hand this over to Jerry.
Very good. Well, again, it's with this great audience here. Everybody dressed up so well, except for Bo Bates. Appreciate the example our students set for our teachers. But we are very excited with the accomplishments of our, two of our groups. And we're recognizing our winners in the regional competition for both HOSA and also FBLA. I've asked both sponsors and their winners and representatives for those competitions to be here. I'm going to ask Ms. Harvett to position herself up front to introduce her who competed in the FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. And they may have a few things that they want to say to the board tonight.
Thank you. We'd like to say that we're honored to be recognized here at the board meeting, the Future Business Leaders of America, on behalf of myself as lead advisor, also Cia Hunt and Kim Moore as co-advisors. We appreciate your inviting us. And we'd like to welcome Drew Greenway, who's going to speak on behalf of the club. And then afterwards, we have Yidya McManus, who's going to do his short speech to show you what his competition is like. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Drew Greenway, and I am Chester County FBLA's Chapter Secretary. And tonight, I would just like to give you a brief overview of what FBLA is about. And as FBLA, we are Future Business Leaders of America, and our goal is to strengthen business and communication skills, leadership skills. We go out and connect with community leaders, and we participate in service projects throughout the county. And tonight, for the honor of lenders and for the eligible Gulf state, for first place, I myself place in economics. And if you were here, please stand. Alex Parrish in healthcare administration. Solomon Smith and Trenton Sweeney, we're marketing team. Brad Watkins in security and investments. There were six second place winners. Ben Arnold in advertising. Austin Best in cybersecurity. Megan Greenway in introduction to business communication. Eli Davis, introduction to information technology. Ethan Cox in insurance and risk management. Matthew Atkins, introduction to parlor and street procedure. And there were two third place winners. Colby King and Luc Knowles in hospitality management. They were a team. And then Nicholas Gleason, an introduction to informational technology. And so there was a fourth place winner. There was Jade Way, kind of advertising. And one fifth place winner. Well, we had a couple of fifth place winners. Andrew Black, introduction to financial math. And Christopher McDaniel on informational technology. The seventh place winners were Austin Fields in agribusiness and Edmund Brumback, introduction to financial math. And Tyler Crowe will represent us in the elevator Future Leadership Academy. And David Showers will represent us in state digital video production. And Yidya McManus is also eligible to go to state public speaking, and I believe he will be giving his speech first.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you all a little taste of what we do in FBLA and the kind of competitions that we participate in. In today's businesses, there are certain things that are held as important virtues. Those certain things include hardworking attitudes, a positive environment, professionalism, and being open-minded. But a certain virtue is often forgotten in business, and it's patriotism. Patriotism can help a business in many ways. The first way is using patriotism as a brand. What brand do you consider patriotic? Ford, Coca-Cola, Levi's, John Deere? The reasons these businesses are, come to mind is they create the image of being all-American. Branding isn't just used through nationalistic logos or imagery, but also by presenting an idea of what it means to be an American, meaning they show things like history as well as where their product is made. Patriotism instills confidence in customers, uncertainty of what goes on in the country, and using it as a brand is an effective way to improve a business. Another way that patriotism helps a business is being economically patriotic. Economic patriotism is recognized in the U.S. as a distinct part of the world economy. Being economically patriotic means supporting America's economy. Businesses can achieve this by honoring laws for businesses, like filing taxes. But what businesses can really do to stay economically patriotic is to keep business inside of America. Keeping business inside of America can benefit the U.S. economy by keeping jobs in the U.S. as opposed to overseas. This is a policy that President Trump is trying to carry out. He has said things like, "We really need to keep jobs in America. We have to take jobs from other countries because other countries are taking our jobs." Trump is being economically patriotic by trying to benefit the U.S. economy. And if businesses want to be patriotic, they should too. Being economically patriotic can benefit the economy and the good of the country. The good of the country also depends on the character of its citizens. And having individuals with patriotic character can greatly benefit the country. What is the thing that Gerald Ford, Neil Armstrong, and Steven Spielberg all have in common? They're all Eagle Scouts. These Eagle Scouts, along with many others, have found large success in life. I'm almost done with my Eagle badge, and the reason I want the badge is because businesses are more likely to hire Eagle Scouts. This is because Eagle Scouts are required to show respect, trust, loyalty, and many other qualities along with patriotism. FBLA also teaches patriotic character. Before conventions, the Fledge of Allegiance is set. Saying the Fledge of Allegiance establishes that the club supports America, as do its members. The goal of FBLA is to create tomorrow's business professionals. FBLA teaches its members' character of how to lead a business, and the character taught causes America to have better citizens, making both the character of FBLA and its members patriotic. After high school, the rewards for learning the patriotic character is shown. Colleges are more likely to accept Eagle Scouts and FBLA members, and businesses are more likely to hire because businesses want patriotism in the workplace. They want patriots because being a patriot doesn't mean just showing love towards one's country. It means showing through your actions what America stands for. America stands for truth, equality, freedom, and many more great things. And showing patriotism in all aspects of business can benefit the country, the business, and its amazing citizens.
I've asked Ms. Chris Olson to come forward and speak of her HOSA competitors.
I'm really excited about HOSA. This is my 19th year to do it, and it gets better every year. We have some really great competitors this year. First place winners this year, Peyton Davidson, Erica Worthy, Haley Kessler, and Mailey Gwen One in first place for health education. So if y'all could just come up and stand, and you can tell them.
We taught several classes that affects alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, drugs, and other, other drugs have on the body. We placed first at regionals, and we plan to place first again at state.
Amen.
Another first place winner was in sports medicine. That's Ashton Williams.
I placed first in sports medicine. I would also like to thank the school board members, our superintendent, and our administration at Chester County High School for recognizing not only the importance for our health programs, but also our CTE programs, fine arts, athletics, and extracurricular activities. Our health science program, along with HOSA, has provided me with direction for my career. And I know that students at Chester County, we afforded many opportunities outside of the classroom that help us all embody Chester County High School's guiding principles of respect, trust, and honor.
We have a second place winner. She's a freshman, Kaysha Hodg. She placed a second in prepared speaking. She's waving. We have a third place winner, Ethan Cox, for nursing education. Third place in home health, Elizabeth DiMarco. We have a third place winner in research persuasive speaking, another freshman, Sarah Messenger, waving in the back. Fourth place in epidemiology, Taylor Gary. Fourth place in physical therapy, Ally Humphrey. Fourth place in certified emergency response team, Alex Parrish and Emily Eads. And then fifth place in nutrition was Austin Warren. And Megan Bates placed, she ranked in the top 10% for the National Healthcare Issues Exam. So we're very proud of all these students. Great job. Third place biomedical debate team, Nathan. Tell them this.
We had a debate against other schools, and where social media should be limited for teams or not. And we drew the affirmative side, and we placed third.
And the debate team included Taylor Henley, Jack Hilton, Ethan Nails, and Nathan Greer. And they placed third.
If I may add, this is, again, just two examples of our successful programs of study for our CTE program. Recently, we had a CTE audit, which is always a fun adventure for the state to come in and inspect our products, what we're doing for our students, what services we provide, what equipment we use to provide them the relevant content so they can be productive citizens outside of high school setting. We've had a good report thus far, and I learned just a few days ago, the deputy commissioner, when he came back last month to visit, was speaking accolades to the programs of study that we have at Chester County Schools. So again, for the work of these ladies, along with the other successful programs, we're very much on the state map as far as successful CTE programs. So I compliment both of these ladies for your good work. And you students for setting the dress code so high.
Can I just add one more thing? Two other teachers with me, and I'm sorry, Ms. Harvett did real well, including her other teachers. Jessica Emerson, who started this year, is also one of the HOSA sponsors, as well as Deborah Donovan. So the three of us together help, help with that CTE program for health science.
Well, on part of the board's part, we'd just like to say congratulations, guys. Y'all did a great job representing Chester County as well, and we do appreciate everything you do and all of our teachers for y'all's fine work. Thank y'all.
The rest of the board meeting will be extremely exciting, but if you do have some other obligations that you want to take, you have the opportunity to leave. Thank you for coming tonight, folks. Guys, there's some chairs over here if you want to take it. It'll make Sarah feel better.
All right, guys. The next thing on the agenda is going to be delegations, and the delegation looks strong. I'd just like a celebration we just had, Ms. Ginger. Okay, Ginger.
I'm going to stand behind the podium. I'm coming to you as a parent, a performer by spell player, and a supporter of the softball and baseball programs. For many years, I have asked about a hitting or changing facility for the teams to have located at their fields. I have always been told that we do not have enough money in the budget for that, but all I ask for you to do tonight is to consider putting this item in the list for future projects. If you could just imagine baseball and softball seasons trying to start up right now, just take a look outside, with the amount of rain that we are getting, where are they supposed to practice? If you look at the surrounding counties, which include Lexington, Scottsdale, Riverside, Southside, McNary, just to name a few, they all have their own private facilities that the schools have provided for them. I believe that our students deserve the same advantage. I would like to share a letter from one of our coaches. Hello, members of the Chester County Board of Education and Director of Schools, Troy Kilzer. My name is Bo Bates, and I'm writing you this letter as a parent of two children in our school system, a 12-year softball coach, and a lifelong resident of Chester County. I want to ask the board to consider allotting funds for a hitting and changing facilities onsite for both softball and baseball teams. The buildings could be built for less than $50,000 for each building. This would give both junior high and high school, baseball and softball teams, a place to work and dress all year round. I totally understand that money is always tight and that funds are usually committed elsewhere, but I still ask you to consider developing a plan to implement these very important buildings in a timely manner. I want the board to understand and realize the impact that these buildings will have on the youth of Chester County. This year alone, the buildings will have a positive impact on 83 student athletes on a year-round basis. This impact will never happen until they have a place to call their own, where they can work and improve their craft, which will have a positive impact in their overall school experience. Our softball program alone has had a total of 18 girls in recent years that have been able to attain college on a softball scholarship. Now, I want to interject right here. So we've had some baseball too, because I have one at Riverside.
I'm not writing about baseball.
We also have had countless other kids that are able to use the softball field as a release and become productive members of the community. That impact is priceless for the families as well as our town. That number will begin to dwindle if we do not attain some sort of hitting building due to the kids that they are competing against. All either have facilities or have something in the plans to be built that we do not have. I understand that there is a cage at North Chester that can be used to hit and throw for short distances. Although we are very thankful to have such a place, this place is not adequate. We have three different teams that compete for this building in the spring alone, and with the ever-growing school curriculum, this is not feasible. Due to this problem, both the softball and baseball teams pay part of their budget to hit in a local business. North Chester is not a hitting-only building. It is a multipurpose building, school, with other kids using the facility and outside organizations that rent it and take precedence over our teams. For instance, on Mondays and Wednesdays, there is a cheer squad that has the gym after school. As I close, I want the board to know that I am thankful for the job that they do. I'm appreciative of the school system that we have here, and I get to send my children to every day. With that being said, I think it's our job as a county to try and improve where there is a need. There have been things built in our system that will never have any impact on as many kids and be used year-round like these buildings would be. Thanks again for allowing me time to speak. And that letter was written by Bo Bates. I also have another letter that was written by Coach Colrain that I have a copy of that I would like to share with you. I would just like to interject that this is a very important project for me. I don't really have any other children, I guess y'all know that, that would be coming up and using this facility, but I do think that it's important for the community. I think that if someone had come up and done this when my child was in elementary school, he would have gotten a lot of use out of this. My family was able to send him to places to do this. We had the means in order to send him to places and afford the facilities to do that. Everybody doesn't have that, and I think the school should have it on the ground where it would be just Chester County, and they could use it anytime that they needed to. So thank you for allowing me to speak, and I would just really like for you to urge you to consider this, put it on the agenda, and try to get it in the budget so possibly we can see this happen in the near future. Thank you.
I've just got a couple of questions, guys. Y'all got to play out some questions. Bo, what size building were you considering, or what do we look to here? Give us some.
Yes, sir. We have called around and asked, but we really just looked for something for us. You know what I'm saying? Like Riverside is crazy. You know, we'd never get, we're not asking for anything like that. Something like a 40 by 70 spot, baseball throws, you know, 60 feet, you know, for them to be able to run, it'd have to be 90 feet, and they have 90-foot bases. So, but we throw 43 feet, but, you know, we could run, you know, if we had a 70-foot. So, I mean, you're, you know, just whatever we can get. But a 40 by 70 would be enough to put a cage in, and then at one end have, you know, where you could dress. You know what I'm saying? We have, we have girls, you know, they have boys. Of course, I have a son coming up, you know, he may never make it, but if he does, you know, just a place for them to get in there and change clothes, you know, not asking for anything immaculate, nothing too over the top, just a place we could go in and call their own and let the girls and the boys, you know, whether or not having to run into school, go to their car, run back in, dress, go back, get to the field. I mean, you know, these kids are busy, you know. They don't just play baseball. They don't just play softball. Some of them play softball and volleyball. Some of them play softball, volleyball, and work. Some of them, you know, do the thing Miss Ginger or Miss Croom, you know. They have things at school they have to do, and when they don't have anywhere to go, just like baseball, for example, okay? You got junior high baseball in the cage, you know, they're a little bit different than the high school. They don't have cars to drive, so Coach Golf and him allow them to use that right after school. So they'll hit it first, then they'll let baseball, junior high baseball come in and hit, then the boys will come in after and hit after, you know. It's, it's not a, you know, in the years past, it didn't matter because no one had it, okay? No one had a place to hit. Now, all these schools we're competing against, they all have them, you know, and we're, you know, they're in there in the middle of the game, and they're sending their pitchers in there to work inside getting throws in, or they're sending their hitters in between innings, getting hits in, you know, getting swings. And it isn't necessarily about winning and losing. It's about allowing these kids a place, just like Miss Ginger said. A lot of these people don't have the means to go off and do it, you know. Until Michaela's daddy opened up Impact, you know, we didn't have it here, so they'd have to go to Jackson and things like that, you know. But then, he only has a few cages, so you have to fight for a cage in there too, you know. But like, you got junior high softball plays in the fall. Junior high baseball plays in the spring, and then we play in the spring, and high school plays in the spring. You know, that's a lot of kids. You don't think about it being that many kids impacted, but it is. You got 25 on one team, 24 on one team, 18 and 19, you know. It's, it's a lot of kids that are impacted by this.
Where did you, where did you envision us putting the building?
Well, Coach Golf can speak for himself, but I can speak for me. I've talked to Mr. Dwayne, and I've talked to Mr. Bobby, and neither one of them said it'd be any problem. Mr. Bobby said that he would talk to them and get them maybe talk about, well, up our lease, where it'll last longer than the building would possibly last, you know, things like that, just, or possibly deed it over. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to put that in their mouth, but that was said at one time. I got Mr. Brent Beshers to come out and show us where the lines was at. I asked him if it'd be okay. He said that'd be no problem, just has to be, if it's 12 foot tall, 12 foot off the line, things like that. We've got a ton of room over to the side. Down our left field line is where we would build it, you know, we'd want to build it because we would go right out of our dugout, you know, and the girls could, you know, go right out of our dugout, go in there, change their clothes, into our little makeshift locker room or whatever, and then come back in, you know. The, the spot, we have plenty of spots, you know. Coach Golf's spot out here, you know, the county owns, or the board owns, whatever, you know, plenty of, plenty of room out there, and it's plenty of room out here, you know. The spot is not the problem, it's just allocating the money to do it, you know, and committing to do it.
Something we just had to discuss.
Oh, yeah. We wouldn't.
College.
Well, I did, I don't mean to interrupt.
We always say, "Coach Eads, can you look into this as far as the building?"
Well, I've actually got two quotes.
Where'd you get them from?
I got them from a place in Jackson. They quoted us. But I can't remember the name of the company in Jackson. Reed's Metals in Jackson, and another place in Corinth, I think it was Corinth or Ayuka. Just the cost of a 40 by 70 metal building, you know. And I talked to Mr. Brent about the, he gave, I got it all in the car, but I didn't think y'all want to see all that. You just wanted to, you know. But the Reed's Metals, I think it was.
24.
Yeah, 24, but that was the high, you know, but we're not trying to live in there. You know what I'm saying? It's nothing, there'll be no water, you know, not trying to.
In the dressing room, you wouldn't have water?
If you would let us.
Yeah, of course. We're just wrong place to get in to dry and to hit, you know.
What kind of floor surface were you?
It'd be concrete, and we'd need some sort of, like, turf on it. I've called about that too. I got a quote on it.
So that $50,000, is that all-inclusive, what you have with all your floors and sections?
Yes, sir. And if it's not, it would get us our concrete, our bottom and our top, and we would do the rest, you know. And we would come up with, we would raise money or do whatever we had to do. If we had somewhere to get in, you know, lights, of course, you know. Freed has their old daycare, their old Big Bad Wolf School over there, they've turned that into a little hitting cage, and it's awesome, you know, it's just a place where they can go in, and they got two cages and then a spot to throw. You know, it's, it's perfect. And then, you know, they used North Chester for years, you know. They tried to, we would work around them, you know.
What cheer bunch is using? He said some cheer. I don't know.
Some, some. But I'll, I'll give you a little insight about that as well. You know, if, if North Chester was just that, it wouldn't be onsite, but it would be a place for you to leave your stuff up, you know, and leave it, you know, get it all set, but it isn't that way. You know, you have different schools that use it, or I call it schools, the alternative schools in there and all this, because you can't leave anything in there, you know. Everything has to be out, you know, and cleaned up, and that's fine, but that's, that's not anywhere near what anybody else has, you know. And, and I think our county, and I understand we're not asking for it tonight, but I think our county could come up with something for these kids to have, you know, onsite, to dress and to work. You know, we're not asking for anything extracurricular. It's, it's work. I mean, these kids, they, they've spent their whole life doing this, and this is, you know, as important to them as anything on earth right now, you know. And, and, you know, we understand that money's money, but they just want to get, you know, want to play, so, yes, sir.
Does other counties, these dressing rooms, do they have showers?
Oh, yeah. I mean, don't go to Riverside, you know.
Or Scottsdale.
But yes, sir. They've got showers, you know, they got bathrooms, you know. It's, it's a.
They're not.
Now, Scottsdale may not. Their, their baseball doesn't have showers. Riverside's got everything, you know. It's, it's, it's the real deal. I mean, they've got a hitting side, they've got a coach's office, they've got, you know, players' locker room, you know. We're not, we're not asking for that, you know. We're asking for a place to work, you know. So, but y'all are welcome to go. I can set you up with any of the coaches, or Coach Golf, or Coach Colrain can, if you want to go look at it, you know. Coach Quinn, he used to be here, he's at Riverside. And, but anyway, they got some nice stuff, you know, but.
You, location is no problem?
No, sir. We would want to put ours beside the field. I mean, ideally, everybody would want it beside the field. Now, I don't know where they could put theirs. Coach Quinn might ask.
I spoke, I spoke to Coach Chad Hannah, you know, he all took coaches, the junior high baseball team, and he even said, I thought, hey, what a great idea to put one out beyond, beyond the left field fence on the practice. He said, "Mike, we don't even use near that section down there." He said, "That would be perfect." He said, "You know, you know, I, I'm willing to do anything." You know, I even proposed one time, I asked someone about, you know, if, if junior high football could use it as a dressing room in the fall, when we're not in there, does that make sense? And we could kind of kill two birds with one stone, and that way, we'd have it in the spring, and everybody just works very in harmony together there. That's a possibility, but the space, I don't think's a problem.
Well, just like what Bo had alluded to, we don't own the softball field. That's, that's county. County owns that. So just making sure when we're talking about approval from, you know, we would have to get the blessing of Dwayne Seaton, and I didn't know, does Bobby, I mean, does the city own the portion of that?
No. I thought it was in just the middle of that factory.
Okay.
They told us that Mr. Brent came out, and I talked to Mr. Dwayne and Bobby, Mr. Bobby. But, and, and the lines, you know, the county. but, and, and the lines, you know, the county actually owns that whole parking lot, you know, we, we lease that whole thing for whatever amount, you know, dollar a year, whatever it is, and the lease actually goes out the 2022 is when it, and they'll have to re-up, but he said, Bo, that will not be an option, or will not be an obstacle. Don't worry, Dick, we'll do whatever it takes, even Bobby said the same thing, we'll talk, because they don't want to hold anything back.
That's what, are you talking about?
Bobby King, yes, sir. Yes, sir, Bobby King. Mr. King, he said he'd get with Dwayne, just to talk, I mean, just like-minded people, you know, said, that won't be a problem, we'll, we'll take care of that, that's not going to be an obstacle, we'll, you know, we'll up the lease for a certain amount of time, where if it's going to be a lease, where it'll long past the life expectancy of the building that you're going to build, you know, so that won't be a problem, you know, or anything about that. I understand we don't own that, that land, though.
Coach Golf, I, I've looked at there before, and I think you're right, it's about behind left field fence, it's really a good level, about like his table out there, there's just a lot of wood there. What do you think, guys?
Well, we think they'd talk about it, get...
Look into it, Silver King.
Yeah.
Make sure to look.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We will, we will consider, we'll look into it, maybe Coach Eze, he might get us surprised for what you think, and, and we'll...
In your spare time.
Just something else that you can do, Rick, that's why I'm here for. I need some of that. All right, thank you.
Gentlemen, as I told you before, if you want to stay for the rest of the engaging program, you are welcome to do so, but if you'd like to leave, you may leave. Thanks, you come, Bo.
My trip, my trip.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, Dylan's over there. Sorry, wait out there.
Oh, yeah, I think I'll say it.
All right, next thing we're going to do is, Mr. Kears is going to do some drawing up there for the teacher awards.
Didn't you draw your name out here? I want to get my computer back. If you remember, we are for this six-month period where we are using this as a pilot program to see if we can incentivize better attendance of our staff, this is for classified and certified full-time staff at our six campuses. Remember that the first drawing that we had, the numbers were a little bit higher, however, this was embarking on the start of a flu season, I'm sure February will be a smaller count, because we've had several, our numbers are better, attendance has been better the last two days of school, better than it was last Friday, Friday prior to our President Day and the extra day, horrendous the number of absences we had. But again, these, but also December was a short month, that's why they also had a better chance of being there. But we still had over a hundred, a hundred and one certified staff that were perfect attendance, no personal days, no sick days during the month of January, and then our...
Forty-six.
Forty-six were, were no personal days and sick days during the, during that month, so we're pleased with the work, and we hope that that continues as we model better practices with our staff that it will coincide and model better practices with our students. But I think February's going to be tough on everybody, students as well as staff.
I can relate to that.
Okay, so, again, remember we're drawing three, we're going to start first with a certified, no, they didn't have to be present to win, so...
I'm not even in the...
She's not even one of those, this is, again, remembering this impacts those at our school, so looking at your certified list, the top number is 101, bottom number being the first, so what I'm going to do is, we're going to draw it three times. The first winner would be number sixty-six, which on my list, check it, it's Sheridan Kirk. So Sheridan's going to be our first recipient of the $200 additional to their payroll, I know that'll help the Kirk clan. Okay, we're going to do it again for a second time. The next time is number seventy-nine, which is Rebecca Rediger, she's a new teacher, first year teacher at West Chester this year. That $200 will mean a lot. And then the third winner for the certified is going to be number nine, which is Leah Bieber at East Chester. So the three winners again were Rebecca Rediger, Sheridan Kirk, and Leah Bieber, okay? And then for our classified staff, one through forty-six, we're going to draw two names. First winner is number forty-four, which is going to be Susan Sane. And then our second winner, forty-six, Billy Trice. So, Susan Sane and Billy Trice are going to be the recipients this month.
He have the flu now.
Well, he can, that'll offset his, that'll offset his tammy flu. But again, we are going to be testing this in the months ahead to see if it does a, an improvement with our staff attendance at the campuses.
What do you have? Five people are heavy, you know?
Five people will be.
You have five heavy employees. The next thing is what the policies, and we had recommendations, I believe, on three, but I talked to Troy, and Troy had talked, I think maybe Norris about one of them, and Troy, if you would just kind of let everybody else know what the concern was on it, probably four, two, and six.
Right, if you look at the policies that come from the TSBA, each, each year we have, and again, that's part of the subscription that we have with the TSBA, that they compare our policies that they manage online and compare it to either changes in state law or changes in, in state board procedures, and they offer recommendations for adjustments with those policies. The majority of the time, we're just looking at these policies and following the recommendations from the TSBA, but Norris raised a point that I'm going to raise with you, and it's with policy 4.206, special programs. If you read this content that's there, that little bit of a narrative on that first page, it does, well, again, going back to the change that they are offering with their draft, is that when a child is, is given a doctor's note that they cannot be at school for up to five days, then that child can be, if board policy reflects that, able to receive homebound services. Currently, our policy is that a child has to be absent for ten consecutive days, doctor recommended, before they can receive homebound services. As you read the last statement in that little section, the board could however choose to maintain the ten-day requirement, so we're not violating any state mandate, state law, and I can speak, as I told Bob and Norris, that we sometimes struggle to get a certified teacher to pick up a homebound commitment. We are bound to have that, sometimes those commitments are, it takes several days to be able to get somebody to do that, because again, we are securing that with our certified teachers who are already teaching a full day, and they're making additional commitments to work with a student, and in some of these cases, in recent times, the doctors are making notes that the child can have homebound service for the rest of the year. So it makes a longer-term commitment. I, and again, as I shared with Bob or Norris, I can't remember who I said it with, but, you know, there's been a lot of kids diagnosed with the flu, have been told to stay at home five days, and with the sheer number of kids that we've had with the flu, for example, it, we would have a very, very difficult time of even coming close to accommodating that with a five-day commitment to homebound services. So, you know, my recommendation to stay with the board policy on that one, 4.206, is what we have, they allow you to do so.
I don't think so.
I think it'd be best. So we, on that 4.206, we're going to stay with the ten days.
Now, the, the other policies that we have, these again are reflective of what TSBA employees, staff who are legal, their attorneys who work for the TSBA and offer these recommendations. What you have in your packet was a copy of our existing policy and a copy of their draft, and again, the majority of these are recommendations from them to stay current with either state law or the way the state board is interpreting their procedures. So it's my recommendation that the other policies that start with 4.603, 4.606, 4.7, or 6.2, 6.319, 6.405, 6.4052 are, are their recommendations we accept. And that came out of our, we had a committee meeting last Wednesday and discussed the same thing.
I made the motion to accept the changes and stay with the same one of the policies, 4.206.
So, we have a motion secondly to approve the policies except for policies 4.206, we'll leave it same ten days, any other discussion? I, I, I do, okay. The one with qualifications and use of director's skills, were you including that too, Troy?
Did I? When you said...
Well, it, was it changed anything much? I mean, I've read...
It's basically the same.
That's what I thought, okay. Any other discussion? If you all are favor of the changes, say aye. Folks know that it is approved of changing terminology.
And, and just to make sure you, of course, you can read the narrative and see that there was also language in there that says they're not to be using their technology or using that during instructional time, teaching time, however...
They're pointing to use for the...
That's right, but they are using it for the instructional time, so again, staying current with our policy is a teacher has the right to utilize cellphones or other devices to help, so that everybody has access to a device at the same time for research. It is, it is a difficult thing to manage, but it is more consistent with what we're doing, so we didn't want policies to be contradictory to what our practices are. So it's, what is highlighted and bold would be what we are saying as recommendations.
You know, this summer law, would you change it? You know, when we went to it this last year, it was standing room only in that room, I can't believe they're not having one in West Tennessee.
The reason why I sent it, I got it through email, y'all probably got the same email I did, and since it came up in late, I think late in the last school year, I said, well, if you need our assistance with it, but no, I haven't asked him anything about it.
I mean, because that room was full, what, I mean, it was...
The only thing about Otis is, is it's a two-day...
Two-day day.
So now, that's probably why they didn't have room in Jackson for the fifteen-minute room.
But I haven't, now, I don't mind asking him if there's...
Ask him, I mean, that's, that's one of the better sessions.
Because it does give you guys the updated version of what legislation has recently changed to impact education, impacted work that we did, so I'll ask.
Anybody else do anything? All right, our next board meeting will be on March 22nd, 2018. Anybody else do anything, or have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, or if you say aye.
I'll do that later.
Yeah, do it, run out.